Yep. Tell me how about another minute here, yep? I don't know if we're expecting anybody else to join us or not. Anybody know if Jerry is joining tonight?
I don't know.
Well, I have six thirty on my clock, so I believe we will get started, call the meeting to order at this time. The first item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the January, it's the last meeting we had. Should be a copy of the minutes and the email we received.
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Support.
We have motion, we have support and discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Okay, minutes are approved as written. The next item on the agenda says election of officers seem to come around quicker than I think.
Yeah.
We have any comments for anyone for officers?
I would move that we nominate and elect the two people currently serving as chair and vice chair, that being Mr. Berthold and Ms. Beely. Well, so much for that overwhelming support, okay?
You feel the warmth they're sending?
I know, I'm feeling really good about this.
I'm all for it, sounds good.
Early you're muted, we will elect you while you're muted.
Early you're still muted. There you go.
I touched that button before, I support.
Hey, we have a, we have a motion, we have support, and a discussion on the motion. Hearing none, I guess we should do a roll call vote for this one, roll call vote please.
Yep, Chokovits?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Strayer?
Yes.
Koleski?
Yes.
Berg? Who's not here, Berthold?
Support, yes.
Most pass unanimously.
Maybe, always passing unanimously, nobody else wants a job, I guess.
I know.
But next item on the business, uh, we have temporary use for fireworks sales at two seventeen East US two twenty-three. Everybody had a copy of that in their agenda? Do we have anybody here speaking on behalf of that?
Yes, hi, I'm Chuck Fries with TNT Fireworks, uh, to answer any questions that were maybe not addressed in the application. And if you'd like me to kind of give the overview, I can, but, uh, we've been around for several years and just one little change this year with their construction at the Meyer property to be in the grass out front there a little bit. But then in future years to go back on the pavement, so.
I have one question for you. With that being set up now in that grass area, I'm assuming the parking you're going to be using will be that of Meyer parking lot, correct?
Yes, correct.
So there's, that's the main traffic flow that goes through into Meyer now with all the construction that's going on. Is that going to be a safety hazard, are you going to block off any spaces? I mean, you're crossing a major two lane entrance into that mall, into the, into Meyer, I should say.
No, I understand that, that would be a concern with how sometimes people drive quickly through there. Uh, we were gonna, we were planning on setting some additional cones up to help at least visually slow down some people in terms of pedestrian crossing that little fur affair there, so, no, I appreciate you pointing that out, yep.
All right.
Uh, this is a multi-year request, correct?
Yes, sir, uh, last two times I think we've done a five-year or, or multi-year at least. And then talked to Jeremiah about that as well, so looking for a five-year approval for this one.
And how many years have you been at this site?
I want to say at least the last eight years, I think we did a three and then a five, if I'm not mistaken. But, uh, yeah, it's been a good spot for us, thank you.
Is there anybody else, uh, in this meeting tonight to, uh, that has a question or to speak on this issue? Commissioners, any other questions before we go down through our, uh, review? Okay, looking at the review, item number one, the temporary use is compatible with various provisions of the chapter. This temporary use was granted for the twenty twenty season, reapplying for long-term requests, temporary use, still compatible, very provision, so find affirmative for that. Number two, temporary use is reasonable use of land, uh, compatible with general plan, land use designation, zoning classification. It is a requested temporary use, commercial B four district, which permits the selling of such items. Find affirmative for that. If anybody disagrees, feel free to jump in here. Number three, the temporary use will not impede the reasonable use of the land or the orderly development of the land in the immediate vicinity. This temporary use will not do that, so there's no problem there, development land is evident, the applicant's current construction that's take place at Meyer, so that's why they're looking at that location, find affirmative for item number three. Item four, the temporary use shall not adversely affect the adjacent uses, building or other structures. The use and company structures are far from the structures and uses, so there's no problem there for number four, I'll find affirmative. Number five, temporary use will not endanger the public health, safety, gender, welfare. The applicant must comply with all local and state guidelines, which include inspections, fire department, so no problem there. Provisions for adequate traffic, and number six, excuse me, provisions for adequate traffic, excess circulation, off-street parking and pedestrian safety has been provided, will be maintained during the operation. The plans show routes of travel, and we did have the question asked earlier about blocking off making sure it's safer pedestrians here, because they will be kind of crossing through and they're going to address that issue, so I'll find affirmative for number six. And number seven, that the grant of temporary use, uh, may subject those conditions necessary to preserve the general welfare, not the individual offer of any particular applicant. The city allows multiple fireworks sales on temporary use basis, therefore, this would not be a single lone case. I'll find affirmative for number seven, questions commissioners? I guess my only question is, this is, we're looking at this through two thousand twenty-five, is that correct?
Yes. So for this, so when I, I'm not sure if Chuck did do seasonal before, but it's required that you do one year to you temporary, and then after that you can grant seasonal. Last year Chuck may be confused with a different one, but he did one year last year. Um, so now he can do his seasonal this year, so because of Meyer, you know, you guys gave Meyer a temporary use as well for their, uh, construction. We're asking that it be approved for the one spot for this year, and then twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-five, he'll move to his original spot, and then at twenty twenty six in January or February, he'll get ahold of me like he has so far, and then he'll be in front of you again, so long as he stays in that location.
So we're approving all five years tonight with the understanding?
Yes.
First year, okay.
So it would only be this year due to the, obviously their construction with all their cargoes and all that kind of stuff going on.
Any other questions for commissioners?
Have we heard anything from the tire people, were they open last year at this time?
They were, they haven't said anything, um, everyone on there gets noticed, so I know, you know, I noticed their company, not necessarily that store, it goes to whoever their courtesy of is in assessing, um, but they have not, nobody's voice to come over there.
If there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, given that we've satisfied all the findings in effect, I would move that we approve, uh, this five-year permit with the understanding that the location will change after year one.
I'll second that.
We have support, uh, excuse me, we have a motion, we have support, we have any questions on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote please on the motion.
Yep, Strayer?
Yes.
Koleski?
Yes.
Chikovits?
Yes.
Berthold?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
You should be all set for a few years.
All right, thank you, appreciate your help.
The next issue. Let me get back to my agenda. Gotta keep two computers going here. We're looking at a sign variance for two seventeen East US two twenty-three, commonly known as Myers. Do we have someone here to speak on that?
I'm here to speak on it, Rebecca with Allen Industries.
Okay, could you, I know we have the written information, but could you just kind of briefly give a little rundown of what you're asking for, please?
So Myers in the middle doing their yearly remodels and their rebranding. They are asking to add the home and fresh signs to the front millions as a source of wayfinding to know where to park in the parking lot. When you're pulling in, if you're looking for produce, groceries, or if you're looking for home goods. It's been up at every single store, that's been for the past three years now, we've been adding those regularly. And then they're also asking, because they're relocating the existing Meyer sign, currently just under three hundred square feet. They are moving that to the center of the facade with a larger area, and they're asking to enlarge the main wall sign to be more in, um, sync with the other signage, so it's not the same size as the home and fresh signs.
Commissioners, questions?
Is there a picture that will show the whole front with all three words, I couldn't find one, I've seen Meyer stores with this before, but not recently.
I could bring up and show you what, um, actually, let me, I believe I have their architectural drawings, if that would help. Um, I actually have, let me see if this elevation drawing, I do, um, do you mind if I share my screen?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, let me find, here it is. Do you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so they're showing the fresh and the home, and then the higher sign, where currently, um, there I know it's completely different aesthetics of the building now compared to what it is, they're doing away with all the, the brickwork in the smaller area in opening it up. This is their standard rebrand that they're trying to do at a majority of their stores, and so it's very nice looking, I believe, and it's become the norm, I guess, of their new store facades.
So we're not getting the big glass towers like cooler cities?
The, the glass towers are right here to the right.
Yeah, but if you, in our packet, the photos show taller ones?
Um, this is, they, they are pretty tall, I didn't think this is just the rendering, they are a taller tower. I actually have architectural, I don't know if I have the size of the actual towers, so
Yeah.
A little bit smaller, um, than some of the regulars, because they seem to have built up, um, the towers on the sides, let me see here.
I think it looked pretty accurate for our pictures that we have.
Yeah, I see what I, I see what I was doing wrong, I apologize.
Okay, okay, yeah, I do have, um, where it shows the, the towers, and this building looks like they're pretty much in line, they line up a lot with, uh, I guess just depends if you have the color rendering or if you have the standard rendering. Okay.
Okay, Jeremiah, just for my clarification, are we looking at just one variance for the main Meyer sign? Or how do these home and, uh, other signs play into this?
Jeremiah, you.
Sorry about that, um, so when I had discussed with, um, the initial variance was, um, looking at the home and fresh, and they asked if they could request the, um, middle one as well. I didn't know that they would do it on the application, I thought they would more discuss that with you, but I guess it's better it's on the application. I guess I would ask Greg how we would handle that, because you know, our, our recommendation is to allow home and fresh and replace the Meyer sign, so I don't know if this is one or.
Jeremy, how many square feet of wall sign total is allowed for this building?
Three hundred.
And how much are they asking for?
They are asking for, I believe, a total of seven hundred, almost a little over six hundred and something.
Six hundred and forty-one, is that the total?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
So, so it's, I mean, it's hard to separate them, but, uh, the proposal consists of three signs, a five hundred square foot main sign, which would probably be the largest wall sign in the city. And two, the two wayfinding signs, sixty-six square feet and seventy-four square feet and change. Uh, so that the total wall signage allowed exceeds what we allow under our ordinance by more than double. There is not an issue with the number of wall signs, Jeremy, is that correct?
No, there's not.
So it's, it's the total sign area consisting of three signs, of also the main sign.
Meyer is willing to negotiate if needed to go with, um, so the, the larger square foot, the five hundred square foot is actually smaller than the prototype sign. Their prototype sign is actually over eight hundred square feet on their builds, yeah, it's, it's because of a lot of the dead space, the J's, and you know, because the J in the top, the I's, they take up a lot of dead space above and below the signage, if you would box it in, it is a lot less square footage, um, significantly because of all the dead space. So they, they did come to the table with a couple different options of going down to either a four hundred square foot Meyer sign, or there's also the option that they have, let me look at the couple different sizes, because they would like to do, um, somewhat bigger than what's existing just because the current wall sign is five foot eight inches tall at two hundred fifty-nine square feet. The, the next one is five eighty-three, the four hundred is, there's a five hundred square feet, and then there's also a, the four hundred square feet with the overall height of, let me see if I can find the overhaul height for the J here. The overhaul height is two feet taller, so just under two feet tall, about it, a foot and a half taller, um, than the existing, I'm sorry, for the M, with the overall height at twelve foot five inches. And so they are willing to negotiate, they're just trying to get the big wall sign to be somewhat larger than the home and the fresh signs, just because the facade of the building is significantly larger than what's currently there, what's currently there, it was right above that red banding and went to the roof line, and when they put the new one in, it's going to be in the middle of this large EFS area, and so it's going to look proportionally smaller than how it currently does there. And so that's why they're asking for, um, a somewhat larger sign to go in the area.
Well, the zoning board appeals can only act on, you know, what's before it, so if you're amending your request, you should do that now, because if the CBA turns your request down, you won't be able to reapply for a year, and therefore you will have to comply with the ordinance, which means you won't get to keep the sign you have either, if you want to have the home and the fresh signs. So you need to articulate your request in a way that is the minimum variance you need to overcome whatever your contending or your practical difficulties, uh, as it relates to sign area on the site.
Well, they would definitely like the home and fresh sign, no matter what, that's like a standard that they've used at all their stores, so they like the home and fresh sign. They are a form of wayfinding signs, and so that's how we've used them at, I'd say, at least over ninety-five percent of the stores, they've been a form of wayfinding sign, so people know where to park. They are willing to, if I could, um, share my screen and show the difference for, I'm sorry, this. No, it's, it's not letting me share. Try it now. We go, sorry. And so this one that's on the, on the wall right here, that is showing it at of course, this is the four hundred square foot option, and so if you look at the facade, it comes up, it has, um, thirty-one inches from the top of where the parapet is, and then thirty-one inches to the bottom, right before where the windows start underneath here. And so this one is significantly, it's seven foot tall, so it is, like I said, just under two foot, it's about a foot and a half difference from what's currently there with the overall height of J. And so they would like to have something significantly, the old sign is, the current sign is significantly old, I mean, I don't know how long this Myers location has been at this location, and so they could reface the current sign if needed, um, however, they would like, uh, somewhat larger wall sign, so it's a little bit larger, because the H in the home and F in the fresh are five foot tall. And so the current sign is just over five foot eight inches, so it's only an eight inch difference, and so, um, they'll look about proportionate across, going across the front area of the building, the Meyer sign they'd like, because it's their main source of advertising for their building, to be a little bit larger. As I know, either way, they would, they would like the, um, home and fresh, and then if they would grant a variance, they have a larger main wall sign, they'd like that also. They'd like to not have to reface the current sign just because of how old it is, and also because it'll be in proportion to the other sign.
So to be clear then, which sign are you, which size sign are you requesting?
Well, I know that the five hundred foot is significantly taller and larger, and so, um, they would be willing to negotiate and go down to the four hundred square foot, and that would take, compared to the, the square footage of the five hundred, which, as you can see, just takes a little bit more, most of the dead space is right here, so, um, I guess if we were to negotiate in there, I'm sure they would at least like the four hundred square foot along with the home and fresh. I mean, if that's possible, or if it came down to at least the minimum home and fresh, and, um, to reuse existing wall sign if needed, but that's not their, their biggest wishes, just because of the age of the sign.
Commissioners, questions?
Tell me again, tell me again, the square footage on the home and the fresh signs?
The home sign is actually, the home sign is seventy-four point five, and the fresh is sixty-six point six.
Okay.
So five thirty-one, a variance of two hundred and thirty-one feet, is that what we're looking at?
Well, I, I, the, the, the home and fresh signs add up to a hundred and forty or change?
Hundred and forty-one point one.
Forty-one.
Hundred and forty-one, and the smallest of the Meyer signs is four hundred square foot. That's a total of five forty-one, when they're permitted three hundred.
Right.
Okay, just, um, Rebecca, and we should probably get your last name for our, for our records.
It's Bressler.
Bressler, okay.
B R E S L E R, one S.
Thank you, um, is there currently a pole sign at the front of the property?
Um, there is actually, um, they actually have a, there is a Meyer pylon sign, and that one actually sits at the front of the property, yes, it's, um, to the left of the gas station.
Okay, um, are there any plans to change that?
They're refacing the current sign, keeping all the rest of signage is existing, and they're just going to reface the current signage that's there, including the gas station pylon, reuse existing poles, paint them to the new blue, go with the new white faces, and so they're freshening up the whole, um, the building.
No change in sizes?
No change in size, no.
Okay, okay.
No, the reason why they asked for the larger sign is just because of the proportion of the building, it's going to be significantly different, and so with the, I know, I don't, is it like forty miles an hour, forty-five up that road? With the drive-by, yeah, so, so it's just when you drop, to keep people from missing it also, I mean, we've done it at, I can say ninety-nine percent of the locations that I've, um, remodeled, we've at least gone, most of them are going with the fifteen feet overall height of the signage, obviously it's different for jurisdictions, but the, the standard one is actually seventeen foot six inches for the J. So it's, it's significantly larger, and actually I'm remodeling a couple of stores that have an eleven foot M, and the overall height is over eighteen feet tall, and so I've run into a couple of those this year that I haven't seen before over the years.
Well, I'm pretty sure that nobody has missed finding the Myers, but maybe I'm wrong, but, uh, I think people have done a pretty good job of finding it all along. So commissioners, other questions, uh, do we want to go down through our finding the fact, or where are we at this point?
I'm going to have a little difficulty with it in that, on one hand, I think the, the drawings presented are nice looking, and, and the sign is proportionate to the building. On the other hand, you know, we have a relative, we, we enacted a new signed ordinance, maybe it's seven, eight years ago now, and this may in fact be the first sign variance we've heard in that time, and the reason for that is we specifically changed our ordinance so that the size of the sign was determined by the size of the property and the setback. And so in determining a three hundred square foot maximum for this building, those issues were taken into consideration.
On the other hand, we've certainly approved sign variances and uglier ones than this one. These do look nice, these new Myers, they look a lot nicer than what we have now. And I'm thinking about when D, was it D and P that came in? And we, we gave them, I mean, this was a long time ago, but we gave them a variance because, Mike, I'm sorry if I'm getting ahead of where we're supposed to be. We gave them a bit of a variance so that it would look, the proportions would be right on the building, and that was, even though we had to stretch to give it, that aesthetic sense was ultimately what decided it for us.
True.
So, so I'm, I'm really echoing you, I, I think it's a difficult question.
Can I jump in here and say that I think that what Myers is proposing aesthetically really looks nice, and I think that it is important that the word Myers be much larger than the other two signs. But I think that they also have a very good point in that with this remodel, they are changing the whole look of that front facade. And I think that it's important that we kind of take And I think that it's important that we kind of take that into consideration when looking at the size of these signs. I just think what, what we've seen here aesthetically um looks good.
Mike, in, in, I agree lad, and Cindy, my difficulty is going to be, are we setting a precedent? Where, where an ugly, unattractive one? We're going to, then we're going to have to also approve, because we've set a precedent here. And, and we're not in a position to make a quality judgment as to its attractiveness.
Right, you're right.
Although, I, I think we can make a, we can make a judgment as to its proportion to the building. But again, that's supposedly built into the ordinance.
Do we, do we need to address the two issues as two separate issues? Or are we, one, I guess, I guess I feel a bit more comfortable addressing them as two separate issues?
Well, except that they're, they're applying for five hundred and forty-one square feet of sign.
That's my question there to Rebecca, is that what you're still sticking with?
No, I mean, I would like to have it applied to as two separate issues, just so, you know, if they can have their home and fresh sign. That's very important to the company as a whole with Meyer. Um, now, when it comes to the main mo- wall sign, obviously they'd like a larger one. So that is a whole separate issue when it comes to it, because we'd like to negotiate, if possible, what size would be acceptable for the building. Cause currently there is almost a three hundred square foot sign on the building. And they did change the facade itself. I don't know what proportionally it changed based on the, you know, with height and width and everything, based on what was currently there. But with what's there now with the towers and everything, it changed significantly. And I don't know if that was part of the factor when it comes to the three hundred square foot. Or if it's based on just, you know, the overall width of the building or square footage of the building inside as a whole, I'm not sure how that runs. So if we could address it as two separate issues, that would be, you know, I think more plausible.
I don't know how we do that, because there's no issue. If all you want is home and fresh, you don't need a variance.
Uh, they would still need the variance because those, those plus their current sign would.
They would have, they would have to take down.
Yeah.
The Meyer, but if all they want is home and fresh.
No, we, they wouldn't be wanting to remove their main wall sign.
Yeah.
The home and fresh are more of a wayfinding sign to the sites.
I get it, but I just don't see how we can separate them, it's the total that's the problem. Either way, I, whatever you think, Mike.
Mike, let me ask you something, you know, you, you have concerns over, are we setting a precedent? You know, and this coming back to bite us down the road. But aren't you really only concerned about similar businesses like Myers? That are of that size and that setback from the road? It wouldn't really apply to, I'm asking this now, to say a business downtown? Or a business that is uh much closer to the road?
No, because the, this part of the ordinance is specific to the uh, what is it, B four? Is that what we are, is B four here?
Yes.
And, but like I said, we thought we had anticipated this by saying, you can have, what does it say? One and a half square feet of signage for every linear foot of the property that you have. And if you have more than a hundred feet of setback, you get another fifty feet on top of that, so.
I know they have a four hundred foot setback, I believe it's from the roadway from Meyer itself.
Mm-hmm.
And then the linear part of the, front of the building, I'd have to do the math from Google to see what's overall.
But lad, my, my only concern is setting a precedent for similar circumstances.
And, and I, I get that, I'm just, I guess my question was, okay, I can see where, say, uh, a Walmart or somebody says, hey, we'd like to change our sign too, you know, I, I get that, but what I, I guess I was just thinking that there would be very few other businesses that would be similar that could come before us with the same issue.
And we're going to do that in several cities, um where it's, they're one of a kind, they're like a big box store, which most sign ordinance were not written for those being in their city. And so that's why the, the size of the building compared to the size of the signs. Um, and they wouldn't plan on coming back, obviously, since the remodeling, they only do it every, you know, sometimes twenty, twenty-five years on some of these buildings. And depending on how long these, they've been there, and they come back. Cause I know the one here in Oregon, they're redoing, and it's been there thirty-plus years. And they're just now doing a remodel on it. So they wouldn't be coming back at all for more signage, because this is like a one-time thing until they would decide to redo the whole facades. I mean, it's a standard across their, their branding that they're doing. And so it's not like they would come back next year and want, you know, another hundred square foot at all, that's, that's not what they're aiming for. They're just aiming to be in proportion, I guess, with what their sign standards um have been for all their new build stores and all their current remodels.
Okay, uh Rebecca, I guess I need to pin you down for sure here. What size metal sign, what size Meyer sign are you requesting at this point?
Um, we'd like to have at least the, well, the current one is two eighty-nine, I believe. I don't know if you guys would be willing to negotiate and go at least to three hundred and seventy-five square feet? And then have the home and fresh signs? That gives them somewhat larger, to maybe get bigger than the home and fresh sign themselves, to be a little more so they wouldn't look like they're straight across the line, all the same height. I haven't seen any stores that have them, that, that they're all the same, they use the middle sign, it's a lot larger due to the setbacks. They wouldn't ask for it if it was closer to the road.
We can't really negotiate with you, we need you to tell us what you're asking for, and then we're going to say yes or no.
Okay, uh, let me look and let me do the calculations really quick here on if we went with. Okay, I was looking at that, if, we'd like to ask at least for a three hundred and seventy-five square foot Meyer sign. And, which is not much larger than the current existing sign, and then adding the home and fresh to the wall, to the um towers that are there as, as a means of wayfinding.
So a total of about five hundred and sixteen square feet?
Yes.
I get.
Okay, now I think we have some clarification, what we're looking at at this point in time. Do we have anybody else in this meeting that has a question or like to make a comment? Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Or are we going to proceed down through our finding of fact? Okay, as I go through these, uh, I know we have some written information, but things may have changed a little bit with uh the adjustment from the five hundred to the three seventy-five. So uh feel free to kind of jump in here as we go through these. Number one, the alleged practical difficulties are exceptional, peculiar to the property of the person requesting the variance. And result from conditions would do not exist generally throughout the city. Uh, obviously, we don't, not have a lot of situations where we have uh this large of a business, uh that far from a main road. Um, there is concern, I shouldn't say a question, that the existing sign has been there and has seemed to work fine. But uh, but considering the other directional information that we're looking for there with the fresh and the home, uh, try and keep proportions the same, I would uh, I would find affirmative for this, unless somebody has a question or a problem.
Could you read the statement again, Mike? I don't have this list in front of me, I have the old, the longer list, could you just read the finding again?
Yes.
The requirement was, the alleged practical difficulties are exceptional and peculiar to the property of the person requesting the variance, and result from conditions with do not exist generally throughout the city.
Is there anything comparable in the city, is the TCS in the city or in Madison?
TCS. Tractor supply, they're, they're in the town, uh, the township, Lowe's maybe is comparable.
The mall.
The mall, if that ever gets utilized, although they're smaller units instead of one large one.
We hope it will change someday soon, so.
We do hope that.
We've seen what will be built where the malls.
I guess I, I would say Lowe's is the closest.
I'll find in, I'll find in the affirmative unless anybody has a problem with that. Number two, the alleged practical difficulties, which will result from the failure to grant the variance, includes substantially more than mere inconvenience or inability to obtain a higher financial return or both. That's kind of a tough one.
It's always a tough one for a sign, because what else is a sign for?
Good point.
Other than the emergency room one at the care home twenty years ago.
Yes.
You can, you know, if we're, if we're going to hang our hat on anything here, it's going to have to be the aesthetics of it.
Yeah.
And uh, this property would probably look better with slightly larger signs and be more appealing in its appearance.
I agree.
I agree too.
I'm not sure that addresses number two, but.
Is that a practical difficulty?
Well, structure's there.
Yeah.
I was also thinking we could address, you know, we grant or hasn't been issued, we wear, that we're wear too much. But we do have a lot of traffic volume on the road across the frontier for someone trying to make a quick stop, not knowing where they're going possibly. Just notice that that could be a stretch, but we could throw that in there. I'll find affirmative for number two.
Okay.
Number three, allowing the variance will result in substantial justice being done, considering the public benefit intended to be secured by this article. Uh, the practical difficulties that will be suffered by the failure of the zoning board appeals to grant the variance, and the rights of others' property would be affected by allowing, by the allowance of the variance.
You know, here's, if we had, if we had an identical piece of property under identical circumstances, if we're, if we're inclined to find in the affirmative for these, and we had an identical piece of property and an identical, identical set of circumstances, would we be willing to grant a variance?
And I think, I think the way we've addressed all these in the past is, like you say, the same type of thing. Everything would be each, each variance would be viewed on its own. But like you say, if you stack up the same criteria, then we'd either grant both of them or deny both of them, we should be consistent. But I think, I think, even though I know what we have written down there, where I'm going to look what we have written down here if you want. Or number three, that grain of variance would cause the applicant to be afforded a special privilege denied to others, similar sit- situated property. And this would not be in harm of those, but we've always looked at that as granting this variance will allow anyone under the same conditions to request a variance, and they would be viewed individually. I don't think that this uh affords them any privilege that anybody else is denied. Do I have agreement on that from commissioners?
The only thing I'm thinking about, and I'm looking at pictures of Lowe's here, and I'm, seem to be remembering correctly, that they don't have any signs facing two twenty-three, there's all face division. And so if they come and ask for more, if they're a comparable, if they ask for more so they can have signs on two twenty-three also, are we going to say yes?
They've got pole signs on two twenty-three and on division.
Do they? Okay. They're not, they're just not coming up for me right now.
I'm going to find affirmative for number three, and while I will, if someone has objection, speak forth now or forever hold your objection.
No, I'm good.
I'm good.
Good.
Item number four, the findings of fact set forth in subsection B of this section shall be made by the zoning board of appeals, which is not empowered to grant variance without an affirmative finding of fact on the category set forth. We have gone through all those categories, we found affirmative for those. And I would say that we've met all the criteria for the motion on the, I believe it was three hundred and seventy-five square foot Meyer sign.
Yes.
And the two, uh, the home and the fresh sign. Based on that, I will entertain a motion. Don't everybody speak at once?
Okay, I'll do it, because Mike doesn't want to. Um, given that we have found affirmative in the findings of fact, I move that we approve a variance of two hundred and sixteen square feet and change uh for Meyer.
Do we have support?
Support.
Commissioners, any question on the motion? And I do, uh, somebody I have not been writing down, is that the correct math?
There's point one square feet, you know, five hundred and sixteen point one, I think it's.
Yeah, it's a two hundred, it's, it's approximately a two hundred and sixteen square foot variance.
Hearing, hearing none, roll call vote.
Strayer?
Yes.
Koleski?
Yes.
Jacobitz?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Berthold?
Yes.
Motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Should be all set.
Thank you very much, have a good one.
Thank you. And scroll my computer here for a second.
Write it down, I voted yes on a sign, I don't know if I've ever done it before.
Next item on the agenda, we have a request uh from eleven sixty-seven July Drive. It's a dimensional variance request dealing with a fence. Uh, we have someone here, I believe, to speak on that, you could kind of give us a brief little description of what you're asking for, please?
Hi, my name is Marley, I just moved to Adrian back in January, this past January. And I don't have a fence up, and I need a fence up because I have an autistic child. My son likes to wander and go, he likes to just move, like he's quick, he's fast, he's just, I have to like keep him contained. And I wanted a six-foot privacy fence up, so then that way I don't have to worry about him trying to climb the fence, jump the fence, try to escape. Cause he's a little kind artist, he likes to figure out, so it's just something he likes to do, he likes to figure puzzles out and tries to escape. So I just figured if I put a fence up, it would help him stay in the yard, my daughter can stay in the yard, because right now I just have an open field. And my house sits on a corner, and I know I can't have a fence up close to the sidewalk. So I was wondering if I could put it at least seven feet away from the sidewalk. My house faces on July Drive, but my yard area is more on May Drive, and it's not really affecting any of my neighbors. So I was just asking for that request, so I can keep my child from bothering my neighbors knocking on doors and, you know, being a disturbance.
Hey, what type of fence is it going to be?
A six-foot privacy fence.
So it's, it's like a wooden fence?
It would be like a, basically like a, but it'd be more vinyl to keep him contained, yeah.
And would that also, would that be in the front yard as well?
Well, since my house sits on a corner lot, they consider my backyard a front lot. But it looks more like a backyard to me, because like you can't really see what goes on unless you're standing at a certain part. Like my driveway is literally like how he, thank you, whoever did that. So, I mean, it definitely doesn't look like that no more, but.
But, but you're, you're, the front of the house faces July Drive.
Yes.
And so this six-foot fence would.
Would start from the back of my house.
And.
All the way.
The, the blue line, the blue line just shows your property line, I'd like to know where the fence is going to be.
Okay, so the fence will be in the backyard. Okay, so the fence will be in the backyard where it says one one six seven, it'll be at the corner of the back of the house, literally.
Okay.
And then.
It won't be near July Drive.
Michelle, will you go down to the last page, please?
Yes, it was a picture.
To zoom out.
Oh, my handwriting, thank you, sorry. I did it old school, I drew it out myself.
Okay, I got it, that's, that's fine, I understand now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Marley, I have a question for you too. On the back of your property, there's a fence there, does that belong to who's ever on the other side on Sterling Estates?
It's a metal fence, I'm not sure, but I do know um from talking to Mr. Adams, my neighbor on, on May Drive. He told me that a lot of kids jumped the fence over there, so it was kind of like dented in. So I don't know who owns that really.
So you're gonna, are you going to put, are you going to connect to that fence or are you going to?
I'm gonna stop it before that fence.
So you will, there will be two fences back to back then, correct?
Yeah.
I, I think the big issue in this whole thing is because it's a corner lot of uh, we consider the, the front yards of both of those sides in the corner lot, so to me, I think that's the real issue here.
And so the requested variance i- is really a bad matter of how close the uh, the fence would come to the sidewalk on the May Street side.
Right, and I said it would be seven feet away from the sidewalk.
Okay, and, and Jeremiah, what's the requirement?
Uh, it's twenty-five feet, um, I had met with her on the property and we walked it a little bit. That, this was my suggestion where she's at, I'll fully say that that was my su- my suggestion. Um, for a decent sized yard. Um, that road doesn't connect to Sterling Estates over there and that fence is owned by Sterling Estates. Um, it's a dead end cul-de-sac and from my time in utilities, I know we have a capped off water line there. Um, but there is a set of trees that she has there and this would be, I believe, Marley, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but this would be the second tree um into her yard that would create not a huge backyard, but a, a decent sized one for what she's asking. Um, I did notice all the neighbors, so they all know this is going on. Um, I haven't received any phone calls or anything, um, but it is twenty-five feet, so you would be granting a um, you know, eight, eighteen foot variance to her at that point.
But the other, the other thing though too, uh, Michael, I believe is that because of the corner lot, we treat both of those as front yards, it's having a privacy fence in a front yard.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And I discussed that with her possible, that's why she brought up the six foot, um. You know, obviously my job is try to persuade people to do it the, the other way, so I asked her to do it a chain link or something like that because you can have a four foot chain link in your front yard, plenty of people do it. Um, but she expressed that her, you know, her child would climb it, so.
Right.
Well, I told her this is the other option that she can attempt, and I said, no promises, but this is the attempt you can make.
I do think, uh, I do think though we need to view this as the, as the property, piece of property as opposed to uh, the residents of the property. Uh, because that's really what we deal with, we don't get into the people per se living in a house. Uh, what, uh, what they may need, whatever like that, we deal as a property. With that being said, this is certainly a unique piece of property. Uh, considered a corner lot, but it's a corner lot with a dead end that goes nowhere and pretty good chance it's never gonna go anywhere, so it seems a lot different to me than just a, a corner lot anywhere else in the city.
Mr. Chair, if I could, if I could agree with you on that point and also point out that one of the reasons why we keep front yards open is to maintain that open vista along the street. And that on this side of the street really isn't applicable for the reasons that you say. What's on down the street is a parking lot for Sterling Estates and uh, it's not going to be harmed by the lack of that vista, that view along this little segment of May Drive.
Commissioners, any other questions? Do we have anyone else in this meeting to speak on this? I don't, we have any neighbors in here, anyone else to speak on this?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm Bing Adams, like, and I live on May Drive, okay, right across from, from the yard. But the privacy fence is gonna be put on and I think it's a good idea and I, I don't see an issue with it from my, from my perspective.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate your comment, anyone else?
We just get addressed for the minutes, if that's okay.
Uh, four four six May Drive.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, at this point, let's go down through our finding of fact. Number one, that their practical difficulties, unnecessary hardships prevent carrying out the strict line of disorderness. These hardships or difficulties shall be deemed, uh, shall not be deemed economic but shall be evaluated in terms of particular parcel of land. And like we've uh, can see by looking at the diagrams we've had. This is a, on a dead end street, I mean, they are the only house on that side of the dead end street. Uh, which, you know, leads to a very, uh, you know, a smaller area for the privacy fence. And it's not creating, like we said, a, a wall along there, so I would find affirmative for one.
Yes, I agree.
Number two, that the genuine hardship exists because of unique uh, circumstances or physical conditions, narrowness, shallness, shape, topography of the property involved. Or it's the intended use of the property that do not generally apply to other property uses in the same zoning district and shall not be recurring in nature. Uh, pretty much like we said for number one, it is on a dead end street and the corner there. Uh, it's just not, they're gonna be the same as a, a corner on some of their other streets. I'll find affirmative for number two. Number three, the hardship or special condition or circumstance that did not resolve from the actions of the applicant. Uh, I don't believe the applicant built a dead end street that I'm aware of. Uh, or built the house in a dead end street, so I'll find affirmative uh, for that one. Number five, the grain of the variance will not confer to the applicant any special privileges that is denied by this ordinance to other lands, structures or buildings in the same district. Uh, once again, this uh, you know, would allow anyone who uh, has similar situations to uh, ask for a variance and uh, we would look at that situation with uh, you know, like we'd go through the criteria, so I don't see that we're granting anything there that anyone else would not have the ability to request. Number six, the variance request is the minimum amount necessary to overcome the inequality inherent to particular property or mitigate the hardship. Uh, it says that the uh, staff did meet with them, they determined this was the minimum amount necessary for the property, the size of that back, backyard, and uh, so they have done that, I'll find affirmative for number six. And number seven. Uh, that the variance ran the establishment within the district and a use which is not permitted by right within the zoning district. Or any use which of a special use permit or temporary use permit is required, once again, this variance is not use related. So does not apply, but I'll find an affirmative for that. With that found, uh, questions for any commissioners, if not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve the request for the variance uh, as submitted.
Support that.
We have a motion, we have support, any questions on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
There, Beely?
Support.
Jacobitz?
Support.
Koleski?
Support.
Strayer?
Port.
Berthold?
Support.
Motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you.
You, you're most welcome, hope it all works out for you.
I appreciate it so much, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, y'all have a good evening, I have to go be a mom now. Thank you.
Okay, we're scrolling back up to our agenda here. Uh, that was the last item on our new business, is there anything else to come before us, or are there any comments from commissioners? Hearing none, I thank everybody for meeting tonight, I can say that's our first uh, sign one we've had in a long time.
Yes.
At this point, we will adjourn the zoning board meeting and planning commissioner will be meeting in a few moments.
We will take about a minute and a half break and then planning commission will convene.
Thank, thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good evening, everyone, uh, we will get started in about thirty seconds. Is everyone assembled? I think so. Okay, we will call to order the uh, April thirteenth meeting of the Adrian City Planning Commission. Uh, Jeremiah, if you're here, would you take role, please? No?
Yes, 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 Mary.
Okay, there he is.
One sec. Okay, attendants?
Yes, please.
Jacobitz?
Here.
Love?
Present.
Weatherby?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Watson?
Present.
Taylor?
Present.
Cotton?
Here.
And Gals? Well, Gordon, I can see Gordon, but.
We can see Gordon, he's here. Okay, very well. Uh, next item on our agenda is consideration of the minutes from our March meeting. Commissioners, I believe you all have copies of those minutes and have had an opportunity to review them, are there any additions or corrections to the March minutes? If there are none, we'd entertain a motion for approval of the March minutes.
Prove Taylor.
Support Cotton.
Okay, motion by Taylor, support by Cotton to approve the March minutes. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Next item on our agenda, usually we're supposed to do this in April, but I mean, uh, in March, but as often the case, we forget about it until April or May, and that's the election of officers. Um, we have a chair and a vice chair position, uh, both which are open to nominations.
Like to nominate Mike Jacobitz as chair and Mr. Watson as vice chair.
Second. Weatherby.
Okay, we have a motion in support, are there any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, we'll close the nominations, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you're set for another year there, Mr. Watson.
Oh, joy.
Um, next item on the agenda. Case number twenty-one oh one oh, um, which is a zoning exception permit and a site plan review for the self-storage unit at four twelve West Beecher, the former cargo tainer uh, plant. Um, I would quickly remind folks that um, we considered this and approved this in one form. Why, eighteen months ago or so, maybe almost two years ago. And since no action was taken on it at that time, the approvals have, have lapsed and uh, it's necessary for us to consider them again. Uh, is there someone here in the audience to address uh, address this project and if you'd identify yourself for us?
Good evening, uh, this is Joe DeSoto with GMD Consulting, representing Jeff and Mike with Purge.
Thank you, Joe, uh, you know, the zoning exception permit that we approved a, a, whatever that was, about a year and a half ago. I would suggest that um nothing has changed in that regard. Um, we will, we will address the site plan separately, but uh, staff, am I correct that none of the circumstances relative to the zoning exception permit have changed since we last reviewed this?
No, other than a more beefed up report than previous.
Oh, okay.
Jeremy, did you have the site plan before?
Well, we will, we will review, we'll take a look at the site plan separately.
Well, I, I get that, Mr. Chair, but I, I think it did not have a site plan when it was approved the first.
Yes.
Is supposed to have as a zoning exception permit and so.
Okay.
It's different in the sense that it now includes the required site plan.
Okay, very well.
But nothing is, nothing is changing as in what their original intent and their original outside.
Right.
Correct?
If I was to look back on when this originally happened, yes, there's uh, no, not necessarily, but you'll be able to see what's actually going on since there's a site plan, so yes and no.
Okay, um, I was trying to save us some time in terms of, of discussing the zoning exception permit. Like I said, I don't believe anything from when we visited this a year and a half ago has changed. Um. Joe, am I correct in that regard?
Uh, you are correct, I did not, I was not representing Jeff and Mike at, in May of two thousand nineteen. However, since the requirement of the site plan was requested by the planning department engaged in my services, the only thing that's changed is uh, the fact that they've been struggling with uh, as, as the world's been.
Mr. DeSanto, you still there?
You're muted.
He's muted.
Joe, are you still there? Okay.
Hear me?
Now we can, now we can.
I apologize, so uh, in May of two thousand nineteen, I wasn't the consultant for Jeff and Mike and they engaged in my services uh, based on the recommendations of having or the requirement of having a site plan provided. When working diligently with your staff, as I was indicating, I didn't realize I was muted or muted. What is that, the only thing that's really changed or delayed this project is, is the pen.
Okay. Um. Since eighteen months ago, we were able to grant a zoning exception permit and made the finding of fact on all required uh, criteria. Uh, as having been met at that time, uh, we will move on to the site plan. Staff has reviewed the site plan. Staff has reviewed the site plan. And I believe that the only, Jeremy, am I correct, the only real concern was a submission of a landscaping plan?
Yeah, like most, um, site plans, this isn't anything new, um, landscaping requirements. You know, they had, they had made their changes quite a few times to get this ready for this. They are able to bring it back to you or to bring it to me administratively. I would like Jason Lawrence, our, uh, forester specialist to look over their species, um, but they also have some additional landscaping that's already there, they just haven't called out, so. I need to make sure that it, it's just proper, but other than that, they've met the requirements.
Okay, and there weren't any comments from any of the other departments, like utilities or fire or anybody like that?
No, um, those have been, um, being worked on since their previous zoning exception. Um, I know they had some issues with their. Um, sprinkler system, so Eric Massengill's working on that with them. Tony is working with them on their outside repairs. Utilities are already there, so, no.
Okay. Um, commissioners, any questions regarding either, questions for the applicant regarding either the zoning exception permit or the site plan?
Mr. Chairman, this is Gordon Gauss. I've got just a really short question about the letter that they sent to the planning commission. In the first paragraph, next to the last. Sentence, it says, we strictly enforce the, that repairs or stay overnight are permitted on site. Is that correct? Are they permitted or are they not permitted?
Uh, that's incorrect, sir. There's no overnight stay whatsoever or, um, repairs of vehicles or RVs or anything that's being stored. The hours are seven AM to ten PM and after the building's locked.
Well, from my perspective, that's the right answer.
Yes, good catch, Gordon. I read over that and, you know, I think I, I am, I implied a not in there to tell you the truth. Any other questions from, of the applicant? Jeremiah, did we receive any, uh, written or phone comments on this?
No.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like, you know, in addition to the applicant that would care to address the planning commission on this proposal? Okay, commissioners, uh, any discussion? I would like to suggest that if we are to approve this, that we approve it conditional upon the landscaping plan being submitted to the satisfaction of the staff. Is that generally agreeable? I see the, the few heads that I can see nodding, okay? If there is no additional discussion, we would entertain a motion to.
I moved to, on the condition of administrative approval of a landscaping plan.
Okay, and, uh, Bob, that's both the zoning exception permit. And the site plan review.
Correct, sir.
And should we put a note on there too, that, that we have, uh, based on Gordon's question, that we have ascertained that. Neither repairs nor overnight stays are permitted on the site, just to, just to clarify that.
I'll put it in the minutes.
Okay.
Support Taylor.
Okay, a motion from Love and support from Taylor, any discussion, commissioners? Jeremiah, if we could have a roll call vote.
Yep, Johnson? Or Cotton?
Krista, you there?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, my button wouldn't, wouldn't unmute for some reason. I hit it like three times.
Gauss?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Jakobitz?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Weatherby?
Support.
And Watson?
Or.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also like to thank, uh, staff. They've been a pleasure to work with. Uh, over the last several months, the building department in, uh, Jeremiah as well, so I really appreciate the efforts.
Well, thank you. We appreciate those comments. Thanks. Next item on our agenda is case number twenty-one oh fifteen. Sixteen ten and nineteen hundred West Beecher Street, a condominium plan review. And is there someone here to speak for the applicant? And if so, identify yourself and give us the thumbnail sketch of what it is you're proposing to do here.
Yes, Greg Zalinski, I work for Objective and representing Objective, uh, today's meeting, we are seeking for a condominium site plan approval. For the fifty-four acre parcel at nineteen hundred West Beecher that is currently under contract with the city. Which is also adjacent to the parcel that we currently own, the hundred and two acres at sixteen ten.
Um, I guess I'll ask for, for some staff commentary on this. Because the written criteria for condominium review is, is pretty, pretty light. So either Jeremiah? Or, or Greg, any comments on this?
This chair, this is kind of the, the exact same thing we did with the hundred and two acre parcel, if you recall that, they're just, uh, establishing a very simple, uh, condominium plan, two units. That, well, essentially fixes the road alignment, uh, that would be. There, uh, for development of the parcel. I would expect to Mr. Zalinski can, uh, can add to this as appropriate, that they may come back for amendments to this in the future, but it gives them an approval. That allows them to proceed through their due diligence process and, and close on the property.
And it's still subject to a site plan review some, at some point in the future.
The end of it, while, uh, building sites would be subject to site plan review. His own exception permits.
And the, the staff review of this, or I was thinking in particular with regards to, uh, the roads and streets. Is that these do meet? The criteria. And of course, this will also, when there's a curb cut, this will require M dot approval as well, will it not? Yes. Okay. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Zalinski? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission on this particular proposal? Commissioners, we would entertain a motion for adoption of the resolution as staff has presented for approval. Their support?
Support Cotton.
Thank you, Krista. Any additional discussion? Jeremiah, if you would call the roll, please.
Yep, Taylor?
Yes.
Gauss?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Jakobitz?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Weatherby?
Support.
Johnson?
Present.
Watson?
For.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Best of luck. Next item on our agenda is a presentation of the redevelopment sites by Gippels Webster. I see, I saw, I think I saw Joe here. And. Who else did we have?
Rod's on as well.
Oh, it's Rod there? Okay, very well. Evening, both of you.
Hello.
Good evening.
So, uh, if I could, I'll share my screen, uh, if you, if you want the actual PowerPoint version.
Shell, if you'll let Joe share his screen.
Yep, he should be able to now.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, perfect. So, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, as part of your comprehensive plan. One of the things that we're doing is we're identifying, uh, redevelopment sites, and what this. Stems from is the city's engagement in the redevelopment-ready communities program. That's run by the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. And among the many things that RRC, as, as we usually refer to the redevelopment-ready communities program. Uh, entails is the identification of redevelopment-ready sites in a community. That, um, the MEDC can provide some assistance, uh, in terms of marketing or attempting to get some redevelopment going on those sites. So tonight, we're going to go through four sites that were identified a while back in this process. And get your thoughts on them, uh, so that we can, uh, wrap up the draft. And, uh, the, the staff is reviewing some of the draft right now, and then this is one of the last components that needs to be pulled together for that. So. The first site that was identified. Uh, was the old Bixby Hospital East, uh, that's at one twenty North Locust Street. And you probably are familiar with it. This is where it is relative to downtown. Let's see, it's owned, uh, our four one family residential. It's just north of some OS one office service zoning.
Post office.
Yep, exactly. And, um, when we are thinking about this site in particular, in terms of what it might be used for and how it might be redeveloped. We have kind of a couple of suggestions as conversation starters here, uh, apartments or condos, uh, or senior housing. Or, or some things that we feel like could be a conversion of the existing building, and then there's the question of the building itself. Is it a building that should be reused, or would you prefer to see it replaced as part of a redevelopment? So I think rather than go through the whole thing, we can have discussion on each one of these as we, as we, as we look at it. So I guess I'll throw it to the planning commission, uh, in terms of, uh, what your thoughts might be for this site.
It's centrally, it's certainly centrally located. It's convenient to downtown. It has. On some sides, it has relatively stable neighborhoods and on other, like across Locust Street. There's three or four houses over there that the land bank already owns. So, as a desirable housing site, it, it's a mixed bag. I have never been in the building. My understanding is that it's very, very much dilapidated and been neglected. And has had squatters living in it. There was a fire recently, whether or not, uh, it's really economically viable to reuse it. I don't know. It's not particularly architecture, you know, it doesn't contribute to the neighborhood architecturally. The old house, the, the original hospital part of it may have some historic significance, um, but certainly the largest portion of the add-on does not. We certainly have a need for additional housing, additional housing options. We probably have enough. And, and you folks probably know this better than I do, based on our surveys, uh, uh, we may have enough senior housing, uh, in the area. But whether we have enough, um, affordable housing, it has often been said that we do not.
Right.
That was my question on this particular, um, site is, um, I, I've heard that it's really not in very good condition, and if it's not, if it's of a condition to be really not. You know, a very attractive site to anyone. Uh, then, then perhaps it's time we take a look at really, um, replacing that, and do we want, uh, a building? That, and I, I agree with, um, Mr. Jakobitz, that it doesn't really lend any character to the neighborhood. It's not, it doesn't look like. It's some, you know, historically significant or, or whatever, and, um, and I think we do have to take a sharp look at, at just the, the economics of a building that is old and has been neglected.
I'd like to make a couple of comments. Uh, there are lots of, um, discussions going on right now in the community about housing and perhaps a new housing study for the county. And. I think the last housing study was at about five or six years ago. Could well have an, an impact on what we would do with this property. Uh, but I would agree with, uh, the commissioners that spoke before me that. It's probably, uh, a very, very expensive project to try to rehab. And maybe it's best demolished and something else built in its place, but this proximity to downtown is intriguing, and I think. Certainly worthy of redevelopment. And, and, and just to add on, Joe and, and Rod, if you'd, if you'd like, I could send you, uh, a little bit of information on. Who in the community is talking about these other housing issues right now?
Okay, sure.
That'd be great.
I have a, I have a question just out of total ignorance. What's the process to go through to get whatever funds are available for privately owned properties?
That depends on a lot of things. Uh, it depends a little bit on what funding you're talking about. If you're talking about, you know, for instance, brownfield. Uh, funding, uh, that has one process, uh, there are other, you know, redevelopment, uh, pools of money. That have different processes. A lot of them involve working with state, uh, the MEDC does have some, uh, money that it puts aside for certain projects. So it's really kind of a, uh, there's a lot of different things out there and they all kind of work a little differently. But this might be, given it, it, the age of the building and the fact that it's a developed site, this might be a, a brownfield type site. Which, uh, I don't know the, I'm not too familiar with the process offhand, um, well, we do actually have a, um, flow chart for that process, uh, in the draft plan, uh, in the economic development toolkit. Which I could bring up if you like.
That's not necessary.
Okay.
And I, I guess, you know, what I'm wondering is what if you've got a building that we've identified as a potential redevelopment site? And you've got an owner that's just not interested. Participating, or, you know, we're, we're selecting what we believe are good places and, and goods, good sites to, to redevelop, and we may not. I get the cooperation we need to, to pull this off.
Sure, it certainly happens. Um, I can think of a couple of examples in communities that I work for on a daily basis. Uh, of sites that, uh, really should be moving and aren't. But part of the idea behind these redevelopment-ready sites, uh, you know, I think from, from the MEDC's perspective is that. Uh, you know, their help with bringing attention to these sites can potentially bring in. Investors who might be able to get someone who's been in transition over the years to move. Because they can't help line up some funding that, that makes the project a little more economically viable and land acquisition more viable if the person's holding out for a higher number. Uh, so that's one of the advantages of having these sites identified. And getting the MEDC involved.
That makes sense. I mean, that's, you know, that answers my question, so.
Okay.
Sure. This particular site may even, uh, be ripe for condemnation, you know?
Quite possibly, yeah. So one thing that I'm hearing is that there's not much value to keeping the, the original building. We don't feel attached. So one thing that I'm hearing is that there's not much value to keeping the the original building. We don't feel attached to it. We feel like if this gets redeveloped, it's probably going and being replaced by something else. So.
Yes.
That building at its highest point, which is this. Kind of area right here is four stories. If it's replaced by something else, how do we feel about the height? Of what replaces it?
It's in an older neighborhood. Again, some of the houses on. Locust in Toledo are in fact architecturally significant and are older homes, Victorian homes.
Sure.
The. The ones along. I'm pointing at my screen, thinking everyone can see where I'm pointing, but ones along North Locust are real right across the street are boy. Fairly rundown and and while they're older, they're they're vernacular. There's there's nothing there. I'm sure maybe the owners would feel differently, but there's nothing there that makes them special. The post office is a nineteen fifty's nineteen sixty's one story. Building. Just on the other hand, there's no reason that this couldn't be a multi-story building.
Sure.
It's a it's a large enough site. That it could probably sustain, you know. Three or four stories.
Yeah, we could even. Consider the proximity of the three and four story sections of the building to the houses around, maybe the portion of the site that has the taller. Part of the building on it right now. That's appropriate, but as you get closer to that property line. The height would come down or something along those lines.
Exactly.
I'm bum pausing. It's just because I'm writing stuff down.
I was gonna say, what else we got, Joe?
So. Any other thoughts on this site before we? Move along? Okay. So our second site is downtown. It's 109 Mommy Street. I'm sure you've all driven past this a thousand times. I think this is probably likely to be a much more market driven. Reoccupancy in the long run. It is a downtown building. There are a lot of different uses available downtown. You know, there's the location for anybody who might not be familiar. You know, the things that we were thinking about for this are your typical kind of downtown options, upper floor residential. You know, ground floor retail or restaurant, maybe with some outdoor dining on the sidewalk. I don't know if there's a use that maybe. Someone has in mind that we haven't considered. Then, of course, there's also office uses, the potential for using the upper floors for things besides residential use, like a dance school or something like that, that doesn't necessarily need the storefront. But does need a commercial space. Ground floor entertainment or recreation. Like I said, it's a downtown building. The building is not going anywhere. I don't think there's any sense that you would replace the building. It's in very good condition. But. I guess if you have any thoughts, we we were, we welcome them on this one.
I have a I have a lot of thoughts on this building. I own a building across the street from it.
Sure.
My first question is. Has the owner of this building been approached about this? Being identified as a redevelopment site?
I would have to defer to staff on that.
I don't think we've talked to any of these sites. And I think part of this, or any of these sites, and I think part of the discussion tonight is whether. The planning commission agrees that these are appropriate sites to. To utilize or whether there would be other sites that you would rather utilize in your plan.
Well, I mean, the current owner of this building. Has a plan and we might know that it's not maybe moving forward, but. So maybe I missed part of it. Has he not been involved in this? Discussion?
As far as we know, no.
No, I don't think any any with respect to any of the sites you're going to see tonight. I don't think there's been any discussion with the present owners of those properties.
Okay, well, I guess I'm glad I'm not seeing one of my properties up there as a redevelopment ready site, and I don't know about it. But I will tell you this. It's it's. It's a building that has its issues, of course. I believe that the best use of this building is ground floor retail. And second and third floor. Residential apartments. We have a great need for the apartments downtown. We need more retail. It's difficult to get retail. But I think that's the highest and best use of this building.
And I agree with Don. Retail or restaurant on the main floor.
And I agree too. I think that's kind of going forward with the plan that we have for downtown and that we have been tried very hard to be true to. Upper floor residential is a great idea. The residential apartments downtown, I think have been very successful. We want ground floor retail. As you said, with the possibility of of restaurant possibly. But I think that's what we want to see for this building.
Sure, yeah, I would agree too.
Yeah, I would agree with the restaurant option. Sorry, I didn't mention that.
There's nothing else on that one. We can go on to the next one. So. A little bit of a theme, the old Bixby Hospital West. This obviously is a much larger site. Than the other one. Set on Riverside Avenue. I think you all know where it is, but north to north end of town. And this is the full site. That you'd be looking at. So. Some initial thoughts. Some of this being kept as open or recreational space, perhaps as part of a plan develop development. A mix of retail, residential and commercial, or just a mix of residential types. There's probably a couple of options there. It may be that there's a small portion maybe at the corner that is appropriate for commercial and the rest would be a mix of residential. A straight subdivision might be one potential. Way to redevelop this. Though there is a lot of pavement there. Possible inclusion of senior housing, possible inclusion of an office component. Very interested in your thoughts on this property.
Let me just throw out a couple of things. Any thoughts on whether Adrian Public Schools would be interested in the property? For sports fields or anything of that nature, just so that I, in terms of reuse of the existing building or replacing the existing building. I think probably. Your only option there is going to replace. The existing building because the one that's there is filled with asbestos and mold and a whole lot of other problems structurally. So that's, you know, that's my input there.
It's also. Oddly, since it was added on to multiple times over the last. Four years, it's kind of a hodgepodge of connections and and elevations. And I think it would be very, very difficult to reuse it. Did I understand? Do I understand correctly? I'm asking this of staff and commissioners. That that ProMedica has committed to removing the building?
That's always what I was told, but I didn't hear that from ProMedica.
Every public statement I've heard from them is if the building is not sold, they're committed returning it to green space.
That's what I that's been my understanding too, but I'm kind of like Greg. I've I've heard that, but never from anybody who really had the authority to say.
I I thought it actually came out of Julie Yarrow. Publicly.
Okay.
I thought that was a quote from her at one time.
Which which, you know, doesn't necessarily. Doesn't necessarily save that site. Because if if their options are either we're going to sell it, and if we don't can't sell it, then we'll return it to green space. Well, they. You know, we have lots of old buildings, derelict buildings in town, and without mentioning the names that. One person has bought and then just neglected. And this would be. Right up his alley. So I'm wondering if we need to, if we need to. Get a more firm commitment from ProMedica as to their intentions with this.
Well, I think as part of your planning or this planning. You know, you could. conclude that this building. Needs to be demolished, should be demolished.
Yep. Currently, it's got a for sale sign in front of it.
That's not the possibility of them returning it to green space or brown or whatever color. If it if it's not sold. You know, I guess. You're dealing with ProMedica and how long are they going to take marketing it before they make that decision that we can't sell it and let's move on? The other thing, just just to mention. And this has been a big concern of City Commissioner Lad Strayer. That, you know, here on, you know, east of. The hospital building, a lot of medical offices and. You know, the thought that with the new hospital being on North Adrian Highway. That are M fifty two, that many doctors may move out there. Now, that's total speculation. But if there was a, you know, a big movement of of doctors. Out to that location, we may end up with a whole bunch of empty offices here. And, you know, again, the commissioner was, you know, particularly concerned about the possibility of just empty buildings sitting there. And nobody doing anything with them. So that's, I guess, just something to keep in the back of our mind that. Potentially, we could end up with more property. Than what we're looking at today.
Yeah.
I can, I can tell you that there's already one for sale on Stockford Drive that's been sitting for months that. I don't see any movement happening on.
Good. Dr. Burns office, was that Bob?
No, it's on Dr. Arshad and.
Oh, okay, yes, yeah.
Yeah, and it's not that they moved, but they've both since not practiced and. I don't see that moving in the real estate market. Office space right now, especially medical office space. Is not moving.
I could see this. If it redeveloped, if it was a teardown, redeveloped as mixed residential.
True.
Combination of of single family and condos. It's a. It's an attractive location if, you know, if the parking lot. This this one is going to be tough because unless we know what ProMedica's intentions are. It it's a big undertaking. It's not, this is not going to be some.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, if we could redevelop it, though, I. I think it is a occasion. I don't think anybody would have a problem living near the high school. You know, families, you know, at some point as their kids grow, having, you know, having a close to the high school is a great thing.
Yes, yep.
Sure.
Do we do we know if, again, addressing staff and commissioners? Do we have any leverage with ProMedica in terms of a finding out what their specific intentions are or or? Getting them to commit to something specific?
I wouldn't characterize it as leverage, but. I believe those statements have been made and are well known that have been referenced. Tonight.
Well, maybe if ProMedica knew that we were identifying this as a redevelopment ready site. A redevelopment site, I'm sorry. You know, perhaps it might change the dialogue a little bit because. Knowing that we could bring resources to this project that otherwise may not be available might be an enticement to them to move the process along. Just a thought.
Okay.
Okay, any other thoughts on that one before we? Move to number four? All right. So site number four is the Courthouse Commons. It's at two twenty seven North Winter Street. Kind of on the west fringe of downtown. It is on the river. Just one locational advantage that it has. It's kind of a unique setting. So there there are certainly things that could be done with this building. It could be used as office. It could be used as potentially even small shops, live workspace apartments, condos. Given its location and. You know, proximity to downtown. What are your thoughts? As far as what the best use of this site might be and whether or not the existing building there is. Something that should be kept. Or at least considered being kept, or if you just prefer to see it replaced.
By the age of that building, I would probably think it's full of asbestos and lots of other terrible things. And removal of it would be my suggestion. I've been in it. It's a little rough.
It's been it's been used as a. Housing project for work release or housing for for work release clients. So Brian's probably right that it is. It's been rolled hard.
I would agree with the previous comments. It is a very difficult building. It's an extraordinary location and it's on the river. And. You know, there. Lots of efforts to move things along with regards to. Restoring the river and making it more accessible and. That particular piece of property. Is a prime. Prime suspect. For having a real. Riverfront redevelopment there, you know? It could be office, shops, apartments, a whole. Whole mixed use project there. Man, I'd love to see that. It is a dinosaur, that's for sure. Thanks.
I mean, on the other, on the other hand, we don't know. I mean. Those of us who've been through the building say, yeah, it's in really rough shape. But it, for all I know, it's got a good roof and a good foundation and maybe maybe good mechanicals for all I know. And so it could conceivably be gutted and be condos or. Or. Redeveloped offices. Although it's from what we were viewing over by the hospital, sounds like we're going to have plenty of office space available.
Right, that seems like probably the the least likely of the uses that are listed here. I think you'd want to prioritize the others.
I wonder about the possibility of the small shops. I think that's a good option, but it seems like it's a long ways off the beaten path in terms of. The downtown and. A place downtown being a place that we're really trying to stimulate some retail. Again, I think I think that far down Winter Street. You know, to the courthouse is problematic in terms of of having many retail stores down there.
Sure, it's not a very quick walk from the heart of downtown. You're right about that.
No, and add to that. Three other significant buildings right in a row. There. May not be immediately adjacent, but three significant buildings between it and downtown are for sale.
You know, that's true. And one of the things that's occurred since. You know, this presentation is put together, the Telegram building is for sale. So that that's going to be, you know, on the market and something, you know, that we're going to.
The two buildings immediately to its north too.
Absolutely, the old Eagles building and I'm not sure that what was access publication, but yeah, there's three buildings right there in a row. That we're going to have to deal with at some point in time too, and and. Probably not the too distant future.
If you consider those three buildings that are over the telegram. Then there's a house just north of those. And then you've got courthouse commons. There's an extraordinary opportunity in that stretch right there. You're really, really redeveloping that section of downtown along the riverfront.
There are, like, like we said, Joe, the where the. Our where our newspaper office is, which is be the one farthest to the south. Our, where our newspaper office is, which is the one farthest to the south, it's for sale. They're, they're pulling out. And then there's two other good sized buildings immediately to their north. There's an older home right there and then this building. So, I mean, it could be a whole strip there that could be re- redeveloped all at once.
Right. That's, that's what I'm suggesting. Yeah.
Mr. Chair, isn't, isn't it so that the telegram hopes to lease back space from. Whoever they might sell their building to.
I think that could well be true. I, I hadn't heard that.
Uh, you know, uh, that could be true. I haven't heard it either. And their staff, uh, um, they're jumping ship, ship almost as quick as you can imagine. I don't know who they'd have there left to work.
I believe Greg is correct in that they did state. In their own publication, that there was an option for them leasing it back if the. New, if the buyer was agreeable to that, but they wouldn't lease, they wouldn't use all that space. So there could be. You know, it's just, just trying to think out of the box here, all these properties that are, could be available.
Uh, that's, that's correct. I think it was only the current press room that they wanted to. Lease back and, uh, you know, Joe, would it be appropriate to look at the whole strip there as the commissioners have been talking about? As this particular redevelopment site?
Certainly, yeah. I mean, the, the individual site may be the kind of thing that we can deal with the MEPC on. But as far as the entire stretch right there, we could think about applying some sort of, um. You know, flexible downtown complimentary. Just designation to that on the future land use map that really applies broadly to all the properties. And gives people a lot of options for what to do there and calls attention to the co- the, uh, the, um. The fact that the river is right there. And, um, and, and calls for incorporation of the setting. You know, into whatever design. Uh, someone was, was to come up with, um, make it part of the riverfront revitalization. Uh, we could absolutely do something like that.
Because in, in combination, that could be one big site.
Though it, it really could be, uh, with all those properties together. If you had someone with a unified vision for all of them, that would be incredible. Um. There'd be a lot of potential.
I have a question for Greg and I guess Don probably would be the most knowledgeable. I know. You know, over the last ten or twelve years, there's probably been four or five parking studies. If we could get more downtown housing and apartments and whatnot, I think would really be great. Um, have we got adequate parking down, downtown? I know the study said, oh, you can have as much. Apartment, as many part apartment dwellers as you can handle. We've got plenty of parking, but yet I'm hearing from. Business owners downtown that. They've got a problem with apartment dwellers parking on Main and Mami twenty-four hours a day. And that being a problem for them and their retail stores. So I, I don't know. Do we have enough parking?
Uh, what, uh, let, let Don, uh. Speak to, uh, the studies because I'm, I'm less familiar with them, but I, I've heard as you have that, uh. Uh, they, they did demonstrate that there's adequate downtown parking. In fact, we were just talking about that on a meeting I was on earlier. Today, but is, you know, the core. Downtown buildings that, that are adding, uh, upper story residential all will, all rely. One hundred percent on the municipal parking lots. And, and some of the contention that we've had, both with on-street parking and. You know, as it relates to particular areas of certain parking lots is that, uh. Uh, you know, it's being monopolized by residents while, you know, those residents really don't have anywhere else. To park and in fact. You know, have a substantial motivation to want to get it, you know, with groceries and such to want to get as close to the door. As they can. As you get over here on the other side of Winter Street. You know, you aren't, you don't have that access to the municipal lots that the core downtown buildings have. And so as you look at sites like this, I think it is appropriate to apply. An off-street parking requirement to sites like this because they are not going to have sufficiently convenient municipal parking. And accommodate the needs of residential, uh, users.
Well, and some of them, you know, combined site would be big enough to provide its own parking there too. So.
Thanks, Greg.
That's a bonus. We got a, uh. Something for the future land use map as well as the redevelopment sites. That's. That's good. But I guess the timing of all those things, uh, was right. So, uh, let's see. Um, are there any other comments on courthouse commons itself? I think we've kind of got a pretty good sense of what, what we feel like works and, and how we'd like it to tie into a larger idea. Okay. Well, with that. You know, based on the conversation tonight, we can put together. Co- uh, some planned content on the redevelopment sites. And as well as that future land use, uh, item that we were just talking about. And we can work toward completion of the, uh, the full draft. Uh, and get that over to staff and then work toward getting that on a meeting, uh, once staff is satisfied with the draft.
No, you know, we had, I'm, I'm sorry, but you know, we had some, I thought we had some additional redevelopment right, right sites. On a list we had. Provided much earlier on, uh. And some of them include like the Adrian Mall as one. Uh, the. Garfield and McKenley School sites, which are both vacant land now. The Jefferson School Building, which is an abandoned school building on the far east side. The Farm Building, which is an abandoned drugstore. Right adjacent to downtown. Were all ones that I thought we had identified as potential redevelopment sites.
While you're looking, uh, Joe, let me ask Mr. Elliott another question. Because it came before the planning commission, whatever happened with Garfield School Site and M and H pumps? Do we have an idea what's going on there?
I believe they bought it. Um, you know, we had meetings at staff level with. With them. I think they came and made a presentation to the planning commission after those meetings of their sort of their concept. The site, obviously it's not zoned for what they want to use it for and, uh. Uh, you know, they, they've received. You know, I think encouragement, both at staff level and from planning commission, but, uh, we, bless Jeremiah has heard, uh. Something that I have not. I don't believe we've heard from them since then, although I do think they're the owners of the property now.
That was my understanding too, um, but it has been quite a while since they came before the planning commission. I'm. I just curious because I've passed there frequently and, you know, they're an up and going concern. On Winter Street, but you don't see much activity going on on the Garfield site. Um, just curious.
I can reach out to her tomorrow. I have her, um, email. So I'll see, you know, maybe I get, see what's going on.
That'd be great. Thanks.
Oh, and Gordon, as you may recall, when they did make a presentation, we had some, we had some concerns about the rezoning too. So.
Yeah, yeah, we did. And we had concerns about driveways and entry and out of the site and. You know, whether it was for mains, you know, South Main or Winter or both. And yeah, there, there were, there were a lot of questions about that.
Uh, so to answer the original question though, um. So yes, there are some other sites that we listed and we certainly can incorporate those into the plan. Uh, we, we wouldn't necessarily get into as much detail on those sites as with the other ones that we've, we've just discussed. Unless there was one that you were really particularly. Uh, as a planning commission thought that should replace one of the ones that we just discussed. But yes, certainly all those sites will be listed in the plan. Uh, as, as, um, prime opportunities for redevelopment.
Well, for example, I think maybe the, what I, uh, and maybe you aren't familiar with, when I say the former farm building, it was a large. Format drugstore. Just immediately north of, on Toledo Street, immediately north of downtown. In my mind, that would be more important for redevelopment than that other downtown building you had picked.
Sure. Okay. That makes sense to me.
Yeah, and add, adding to what Mike just said, um. I've been told again that many of the people who live downtown. And I know a lot of people on the east side of the city are, no pun intended, starving for. A supermarket or some kind of, of grocery store. Um, I don't know whether that store, you know, it was originally back when I was a kid. It was a Wrigley store. I mean, it was, was a full blown, uh, supermarket. I may have even been an A and P at one time. Um, I'm not sure whether that building is salvageable for that use, but. You know, as we look at possible uses at locations like that. You know, I think that's, that's a use that maybe we need to consider.
Sorry.
That's the one that I was going to select out of that list too. Um, Joe, when you say that we would, that. If it's something that we would, would we necessarily need to replace one of the other ones that we've been talking about? If that were added to the list?
I mean, not necessarily. I mean, it's, the MEDC is going to ask you to pick kind of three top. Choices, uh, and that's what they, they, they deal with first, I guess. But if one of those sites moves or falls out of the running for some other reason, you kind of have backup sites that you can kind of move to the front of the line. Um, so I guess the, I guess the last question I might ask, uh, the planning commission is of the sites that have been discussed, including that one. Uh, which ones do you feel are the top three?
I would see, I would put the Farm Building. In the very top of the list.
And, and I think I would not. I think I would put the two Bixby's. And the courthouse commons that we talked about would be at least my three that I think. Um, have real need, um, for the, for us as a community and, and also just, uh, the, the possibility of. Of the riverfront project is, I think, just extremely, extremely exciting. I spent a lot of time on the. You know, on the basement floor, uh, of that building when it was, um, our curriculum office for Adrian Public Schools. And I thought many and many a time, what a great location it would be for. You know, if, if somebody wants to build condos on that, that site, you can sign me up right now. So. Um, I think that's, uh, th- those would be my top three.
Okay.
You know, in terms of my top three, I, I think that, um. The Farm Building would probably be my first. Uh, I think my second would be. Um, the old Bixby up on Locust, um, because I think you got housing opportunities there. And, um, then the courthouse commons and that whole stretch along the river.
Well, maybe, 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 Joe, if we need to make, if we needed to prioritize four of them in not any particular order, it would be. The two hospitals in courthouse commons in the Farm Building.
Yeah, that certainly seems to be shaking out as a top four, no question.
Or do we need to go back and, do we need to go back and look at the ones we, the other ones that we had suggested? And if it's, if it's a group of ten, do we then look at it and, and then rank from there? I mean. You know, I'm not sure we have the complete list is what I'm saying, I guess. Although I agree, these are redevelopment ready, although I believe that one oh nine West Mami is not as critical.
Sure. I agree with that.
As the other projects, so it's critical, but, uh, yeah.
It may get redeveloped regardless of what we say about it, you know, it's probably coming along anyway. So.
Yeah, I think it's more of a market driven.
Yes.
Item, you know, I, there's less planning to be done for it.
But I, I, I. Yeah, I know you're gonna, some of you are gonna take this the wrong way here, but. If I owned one of these buildings, okay? And I was not aware that this was, this discussion was going on. About my building. I would be a very unhappy camper. I think it's not fair to the building owner. That we're thinking about redeveloping that property. And he or she may have other ideas about what they're going to do with it. So I'm just going to leave it at that.
But then doesn't necessarily exclude the current owner from the redevelopment though, does it? Add them to more opportunities with it.
No, in fact, and in fact, I think maybe we need to, we need to, um, cast. The whole redevelopment idea as these are things we would like to see redeveloped. Regardless of who owns them.
Well, of course, it doesn't preclude the owner from being involved, but I mean. I, I don't know, maybe, maybe I'm dancing down the wrong street here, but.
I, I, I don't disagree with you, Don, but I also think that by putting them on the list, you may be doing them a favor.
Well, it may be that, but why don't we tell them that, Bob? For gosh sakes, I mean, why are we keeping this a secret from them? Let's go. I mean, I know the owner of one oh nine West Mami, okay? Did I finish or not?
You, you go ahead, but none of these meetings have been in secret.
I do, uh, uh, of course, does he know that this building is going to be discussed? No, he doesn't know that. Uh, what I'm saying is this, we should inform them. Listen, there may be resources available to you. To the redevelopment ready program that you don't even know about. We can help them make this possible.
And I agree what you're saying with, but we haven't gotten to the point. I, I think we're just at that point where we need, if that's. We, we. We're at the point now where we, if we're going to move forward, we need to approach these people and discuss. You know, like, let's say the farm. I've heard the farm owners would never, ever, ever let another grocery store go in there. I don't know why. You know, maybe it's just a rumor. Going forward, if we're going to talk about these buildings. You know. Right now, we're just spitballing, you know, that building across the street from you, Don. You're right. It's in a much better shape and, you know. A, a much better situation than some of these other ones. I agree. And he might have a great plan and things going on behind the works that we don't know about. You know, but some of these other ones are looking rough.
Okay. Joe, do you have enough information to move forward?
Uh, I do. A couple of things I, I will say is that, one is that. You can always feel free to continue to look at your extended list too. It's not necessarily something that, that stops here. Uh, in fact, I would say that. Putting the whole list in the plan gives you the opportunity to continue looking at those sites and continue adding to the list as necessary down the road. Um, and this is an extension of planning as well, you know, the, the land use plan. Is established and this is kind of a, a detailed look at certain sites within the land use plan. Um, and, you know, it's, it's. It's not zoning. Let's put it that way. We're not committing anybody to anything, uh, by, by. You know, thinking about these sites in, in more detail. But yes, I do think I have enough, uh, direction to move forward and I feel like the top, the top four sites that you've identified are a good top four.
When do you anticipate, uh? Having something for us for another get together?
Uh, well, on our end, we'll work to get the, the last couple of little bits of the, uh. Draft over to staff. Um, and that's the, uh, we, the update of the complete streets. The redevelopment sites and the, um, implementation chapter, which includes the zoning plan. So that's the three things that, that we need to finish drafting. Uh, you've given us the information we need to, uh, to finish drafting. The redevelopment sites portion and then move on to the, the fill in the gaps that we've got in the implementation chapter. Uh, tonight, and then of course, we'll obviously make that, that, uh. Adjustment to your future land use plan that we were talking about tonight about the riverfront area. Uh, but I would anticipate us getting that drafted. I, with what we've got left of this month. Uh, and getting it over to staff. As far as when we get that on your agenda, it's probably something that we need to discuss with staff as, as far as. Cause they need time to review it, of course, and, um. Uh, we'll have to figure out what, what the best date is, uh, based on when we get it over to them and how quickly they're able to review it. Uh, so I don't know exactly what date we might necessarily be able to, uh, to meet on it, but the next time we do meet, you'll be looking at a full draft.
Okay. Thank you. Folks, any other business to come before us this evening? Folks, any other business to come before us this evening? If not, thank you all very much. We'll talk to you later on. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Have a good night.